Good morning. Welcome to the May 13, 2021 special meeting of the Glendale City Council being called order at 9:03. Due to the COVID virus, this meeting can be viewed electronically from your safety of your home. You can also view it on GTV6, AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99, or you can livestream it at glendaleca.gov. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian.
President.
Brotman.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
And Mayor Devine.
Here. I'd like, also like that you may call in at 818-937-100 for any comments or questions. Thank you. What's next, please?
The agenda for the Thursday, May 13, 2021 special public meeting of the city council was posted on May 11, 2021 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And next?
Next would be finance regarding fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget study session five, departmental study session, community development, public works, and information services.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Welcome to the next episode of fiscal year 2122 budget season, and where we will have performances by the directors of ISD, Community Development, and Public Works that are guaranteed to be informative and entertaining, I hope. And with that, I'll turn it to Jason Bradford, our Chief Information Officer, for his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Good morning, Mayor Devine, members of the council. It is my pleasure to present the Information Services Budget for fiscal year 2122. Just gonna wait one second to get the presentation loaded. Simply put, ISD is in the connectivity business. We connect people, processes, and information through the secure use of technology while providing exemplary customer service. The ISD budget?
Is comprised of three divisions in three separate internal service funds. The applications division is responsible for enterprise applications.
Thank you. There we go. Yeah. Nope, nope. Needs to go back to the org chart. Thank you. Okay. The application division is responsible for enterprise application management, including our ERP, our Munis ERP system, our license and permitting system, as well as departmental applications, our GIS, our content management, among other things. The infrastructure division is responsible for our data center, server administration, networking, our help desk and user support, backup and recovery, security, endpoint protection, and configuration management. And of course, our wireless radio system division maintains our radio system for fire, police, GWP, Public Works, parks, and community development, and we are also the site administrator for the ICI system. So this is where we started in 2020. And this is how we have adapted. Seemingly overnight, we had to engineer a new way for the city and the council to conduct their business and provide an avenue for live public participation. We had to pivot very, very quickly, and we basically went from zero video conferencing to full video conferencing as a drop of a hat. And just like every other department, ISD spent time on some pressing challenges during the pandemic. It became obvious the one thing that everyone was gonna need during the stay-at-home orders was technology. We had to quickly mobilize our workforce. We had to figure out what tools to give our employees to collaborate through technology, but to continue to modernize our applications and continue to build out the redundancy and upgrades to our radio system. In regards to workforce mobilization, seemingly overnight, we had to ramp up quickly to enable our employees to work remotely. We had to rapidly deploy laptops, cameras, headsets, cell phones, hotspots, anything dealing with remote work, we had to deploy rapidly. Thankfully, we had a secure way to access our network remotely, meaning we didn't have to compromise our network security to grant access. We had a very secure platform. We just had to scale it up and scale it up very quickly. We also had to increase our network bandwidth, given the number of users and amount of traffic moving through our network. I think the graph on the lower right-hand of the screen gives you an idea of our remote connectivity. In the lower left-hand corner of that little graph, you can see that is a remote connectivity in late February, very, very early March, and by the end of March, early April, it had shot up exponentially with the number of users connecting into our system. In addition to provisioning the equipment and increasing our bandwidth, we had to provide tools for our employees to continue to work and collaborate. I think that the picture on the screen is a good example of how we've adapted. This is actually a screenshot of my staff and I working in Microsoft Teams on this presentation. This would not have been possible 12 months ago. We had to change the way we work and the way we collaborate through technology, and that's essentially what we did. Over the last 12 months, we've implemented such tools as Microsoft Teams, WebEx, of course, what you're very familiar with. We migrated to the Office 365 suite, which allows access to documents and applications anywhere on an internet-connected device securely. I can honestly say our ability to work remotely and collaborate is night and day difference than where we were 12 months ago. Having these tools in place helped us continue to modernize our applications. Over the last 12 months, we accomplished the following. We had our first major upgrade of our Munis ERP system. We upgraded the fire and police work scheduling system. We started the upgrade of the police dispatch and their reporting system. Another interesting project we've worked on with the PIO and other departments is the redesign of our website. We need to make it easier for residents to interact with us and find information. That should be going live sometime later this summer. And lastly, as we took to council earlier this year, we finished our vendor selection and RFP and analysis for our new land management permitting system. And for our radio system, we continued to build out redundancy and upgrading equipment. We replaced our batteries at our radio sites. We implemented a new microwave dish at San Augustine to eliminate a single point of failure. We continued our upgrade of our radios for the fire mobile radios and the portable radios. And most importantly, we have, we implemented a disaster redundancy site. Should we have catastrophic failure in Glendale, we can fail over to our alternate site. So here are just a few KPIs to present for the department. I think the first one is a good indicator of just how productive we were over the past year. As I mentioned, COVID-19 took us all by storm, and we just saw an incredible uptick in the demand for our services. And certainly, technology was on everyone's mind, and I think this first KPI reflects that. I'd be remiss at this time if I didn't thank the entire staff of the Information Services Department. When the going got tough last year, we kept it going. It was certainly challenging, but we persevered, and we did what we needed to do to keep us running and connected. All told, we now support almost 2,400 endpoints, which is basically anything attached to our network, and we support 100 applications. I think the last indicator is very, very important. Cybersecurity is on everyone's mind. In our upcoming discretionary budget for the upcoming year, we have 25% dedicated, or about $2 million in our discretionary budget allocated for cybersecurity. And I would say this puts us at the median spend for an organization our size. While I won't get into the specifics of our security profile for obvious reasons, what I want to convey to the council is we have reasonable and appropriate controls in place, and we are fiscally responsible with what we bring into the environment. We constantly evaluate new tools, technologies, as new threats emerge, and if there's anything that I think is appropriate and cost-effective, I'll certainly bring it to this council for your consideration, which does segue into two budget requests that I'll speak to in a couple of slides in the upcoming year in relation to cybersecurity. This is a high-level summary of our ISD budget, composed of all of our three funds. Unlike general fund departments where salary and benefits is roughly 80% of the budget, salary and benefits comprise under 30% of the ISD budget. The bulk of the ISD budget is in contractual services, meaning maintenance warranties for infrastructure appliances, router service switches and the like, annual software maintenance and licensing for all the various applications, and of course, managed services for GWP and the radio system. And lastly, capital outlay is for all of our equipment, again, computers, routers, switches, radio equipment, et cetera, et cetera. This is our proposed headcount for fiscal year 2122. We are requesting to reallocate two vacant positions this year. We are not increasing the overall citywide headcount. This is a transfer of two positions, two vacant positions, one from GWP to the infrastructure fund, and one vacant position from the Glendale Fire Department. It is a non-sworn position from Glendale Fire to the applications fund. The first position going to infrastructure is a request for a full-time cybersecurity manager. That is one element that has been missing in our environment. While it has been shared amongst existing staff, and we've done a very, very good job, given the risks of cybersecurity, I don't think I can put it off any longer, and it seems like every day another agency is having cybersecurity issues, and I think it's appropriate to have a full-time person assigned to cybersecurity. The second position is an IT application specialist in the application fund. Given the demand for our services, our appetite for technology, and frankly, the number of applications we support, another position is requested for this fund. This is a summary of the internal service funds. We are not general fund. We are internal service funds, so we charge back all other funds via the ISD service charge for services rendered. Our rate structure is roughly 60% to 65% of every dollar we spend is allocated to the general fund. 20% to 25% is allocated to GWP, and the remaining 15% to 20% of our budget is allocated to all remaining funds, and that is, of course, a weighted average. It can fluctuate from year to year depending on the projects we work on. As you can see, in the infrastructure fund, there is an increase of $837,000 or 7.3%. Part of the increase is to the cybersecurity position that I mentioned. There are a few projects I'd also like to increase. The first and most significant is our data center upgrade. We have reached end-of-life. It is, will be off warranty next summer, so we must upgrade and change out our serving platform and our storage area network. The second one is the other cybersecurity ask. We'd like to bring in one additional cybersecurity tool, which deals with data loss prevention, making sure that sensitive data is not passing out of our systems. It is an element that's missing in our environment, which we think is appropriate. And lastly, we'll continue to leverage the cloud storage when appropriate to provide additional redundancy to our critical data. This is our applications fund. There is actually an overall net decrease of $29,245. This is a net decrease even though we are adding a position to this fund. This is offset by some projects that were funded last year that are coming off the books. The projects highlighted below is what we will be working on for the application fund. These projects have all been fully funded in prior years. Of course, we will continue to implement our land management permitting system this year. We would expect to have that live at this time next year. We have the continued rollout of our digital signatures, and of course, we'll be upgrading our GIS and document management system. And last, but never least, is the ISD Wireless Fund, which has the biggest increase. It's 20% or $1.2 million, and interestingly enough, I would call this, these are more related to accounting issues or bookkeeping issues, if you will, and not my capital spend. As I mentioned, the ISD funds charge all other funds in the city for services rendered, while the ISD funds charge each other as well. So roughly half of the $1.2 million increase is actually an ISD service charge, shifting some funding from Fund 660, the Wireless Fund, into the Infrastructure Fund. It is shown as an appropriation through the rate, and it is actually shown as revenue coming into 6030, the Infrastructure Fund, and that is basically to shore up the fund balance in the Infrastructure Fund for services rendered. The remaining of the increase, about $680,000, is depreciation. That is a non-cash item for assets purchased in prior years, most notably our major radio system upgrade and our site redundancy project, which was, most of it was grant-funded. However, for accounting purposes, the assets have to be recorded and depreciated. The budget is actually pretty flat. We do have in the budget a pretty, a few projects, including upgrading our microwave shot out to Monrovia for Verdugo Fire Communications, and we will do our last round of police radio replacements as we need to fully encrypt our traffic. That is now a DOJ requirement. So in summary, it's been a very challenging year. I couldn't be more proud of the men and women in the Information Services Department. They worked very hard to keep us connected and keep us moving. I really appreciate their effort, and I really look forward to the next 12 months as we have some very challenging and exciting projects on tap. And with that, that concludes my remarks, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you very much. Questions, comments from council?
Mayor?
Well, I want to thank your staff. Did I hear someone?
Yes. Mayor?
Oh, Mr. Councilmember Kasakian first.
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Bradford. So according to your presentation, and if we allocate the necessary resources, by when can the city start moving towards electronic signatures across our operations?
Mayor Devine, members of the council, councilmember Kasakian, we are in the process. We have implemented digital signatures for our contracts right now, so that is currently live, and we're basically in the process of looking at all of our other forms in the city, working with the attorney's office in each department to digitize them so we can sign them digitally with digital signatures. The anticipated rollout was in the next couple of months.
Okay. I would support every effort to make that happen, to drag us into the 21st century, even if it's kicking and screaming for some divisions, because so much of what is being done and what we've learned during this last pandemic can be done digitally is already out there, and I feel that many municipalities, Glendale's not unique, drag their feet in catching up. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brotman?
Yeah. I just wanted to, well, two things. One was the training that you pushed out, and we all went through the cybersecurity training I thought was really good. And I think you've been doing some kind of mock attacks on us and the rest of staff, and I think that's also really, really important for learning purposes. I'm proud to say I caught, I caught the one that hit me. I'd be interested to know from you, you know, how that's going? Are you finding you can penetrate the organization? And anything I ask, you know, that you want to, you want to answer offline, it's totally understandable, but just appreciate you doing that, and I think that's smart. I kind of also wonder about whether, whether we have or will or should, you know, bring somebody in to do a, to do a real kind of, what would you call it, just an evaluation of any vulnerabilities we have? You know, obviously, we don't, you know, the ransom attacks that we're reading about are something that, you know, we don't want to read about Glendale, so. And obviously, we, you know this better than me, but you know, we want to be able to, you know, we want to have the redundancy so that we can, we can take ourselves out of any kind of ransomware attack without having to shell over a dime, which I hope we never have to do. So yeah, but I'll just, you know all these things. It's the obvious, and just would like to make sure we're, you know, we're doing, we're going beyond maybe what we would have even thought we had to do, you know, a year ago because of this epidemic. So that was it. The only other thing is, the system we have for calling, for people, the public to call into council meetings, still really kluge, I know, and we have that issue with the delay on GTV6, and, you know, I'm kind of thinking that as we go out, you know, we come out of the pandemic, we're probably going to want to maintain some type of, of kind of call-in feature. I mean, we haven't discussed it as a council, but, you know, I'm kind of, I'm kind of speculating that we're going to want to retain some aspect of that, but how do we, how do we figure out a way to just make all that, you know, a lot easier, a lot smoother for the, for the resident, so that it's more like when we're calling into Councilmember Agajanian's show, it's just a real smooth, or like when you're calling into a radio show or something like that, it's smooth?
Councilmember Brotman, members of the council, that is something that we have currently continued to evaluate on how to improve our residents' experience as calling in. As we have continued in this pandemic, I think there's some more tools available today through the various platforms that would allow for maybe kind of that more seamless participation that you're looking at. So we are certainly very, very open to looking at bringing in maybe a different way for our, to engage our public during our live public meetings.
Yeah. Could we, could we maybe, you know, look at some other agencies? Maybe you already have, but look at some other agencies and what they're doing. I've heard, I forget which one it is, maybe it's Locken Yada Flintridge or somebody. I've heard that there's a pretty well-functioning system for people to call in. Maybe they're coming in over, over a WebEx or something. I'm not sure how they're doing it.
Yeah. We, Councilmember Brotman, members of the council, we certainly have looked at some other cities. Interestingly enough, a few of them have just finally started taking live comment. Many cities were actually just reading comments into the record, which is interesting. But yeah, we certainly have been studying that, and I think the, as I was saying, like the WebEx tools, et cetera, have been enhanced over the last 12 months as we've continued in this pandemic, so we certainly are looking at any, any method that we can improve our resident engagement during our public meetings.
Yeah. The public doesn't have access to the WebEx though, right? So maybe, anyway, I'll leave it, I'll leave it there.
All right. Anyone else? All right, then I just want to thank Jason and your staff because you have made this transition seamlessly and always in a pleasant way. You have a terrific staff, and I really appreciate them. I have one question about, you mentioned that you were going to modernize applications and specifically the website, and I know that we do get complaints about the website, and when did you say that this is going to be completed?
Mayor Devine, members of the council, my understanding is this will be live sometime this summer, so I believe the rollout is going to be July to August. I have Mr. Husepian on the line. I will defer to him if he has a better updated date.
Mayor Devine and council members, Jason is absolutely correct. We are aiming for doing it by early summer. Currently, we are meeting with all the departments. We are looking at all the content. We're doing, making sure our Ts are crossed and our Is are dotted, and as soon as the website is ready to go, we will definitely be showing that, showing it to everyone before we go live.
And that will be a simplified way of navigating the website? Is that what we're talking about here?
That is correct, Mayor Devine. We've actually went in and did an analysis of the old website to see exactly where the residents are going, and we designed the new website, taking that into consideration by putting the most popular, what we like to call hits, on the website right in front on the homepage so that they can access it.
Okay. That, that's good, because that will solve a lot of problems, I think, with, with our residents getting information. So thank you, Jason. Thank you, Hago, for, all of you, for all of your help, because, believe me, I have needed a lot, and appreciate the, the focus on cybersecurity. I know how important that is. So thank you for this report. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Galanian?
Yes. Mayor Devine, members of the city council. Next up is none other than Philip Lanzafame, Director of Community Development.
Good morning, Mayor and council. I am Philip Lanzafame, your Director of Community Development, and I have the pleasure of presenting the Community Development Department budget for you today. Before I start, I would like to thank the division heads, Bradley Calvert, Joseph Redarte, and Peter Zovak, for their leadership the last year in helping in the preparation of the information for you today. But I'd like to give a special thank you to the fourth division head, Tomar Sad, who stepped up to fill a significant void in economic development. Her work on this budget and she being the main contributor to the presentation, so thank you to them for their efforts. Community development, bread and butter really is dialogue with the community. It's, it is our purpose to translate that vision to you, that you can then turn it into policy and make it the community's vision and put it into action. All the departments have a common mission to improve the quality of life of our residents. We do it through development to try and create a, a better community. If our tactical operations, if we're lucky with our tactical operations, they overlap with other departments, and we partner with them to leverage our resources. This year, we have partnered with fire, police, library arts and culture, community services and parks, Public Works, the city manager's office, and information services, not to underscore us relying on the other internal service departments. We are composed of six divisions, six divisions, one department. You will hear us refer to ourselves sometimes as one CDD. These departments are unique, I should say divisions, they're unique in their discipline and what they do. They could stand alone, and in many cities, they're in different departments, some in the city manager's office, some in Public Works. In Glendale, they're here gathered together specifically because they do work together in creating that entire development process. We set the vision through planning. We include all variety of housing opportunities. We make sure that any development is built safely and will withstand the test of time. Economic development ensures that we remain economically vibrant, and through neighborhood services, we maintain that high level of quality. Going through these divisions, administration, much like others, carries our budget. Human resources, purchasing, financing, operations for the entire department. Planning has current planning, comprehensive or long-range planning, urban design, historic preservation, and mobility planning. In our housing division, we oversee Section 8, the housing development, and then Housing Assistance Services, which of late has been the monthly housing subsidy program and our rental rights program. Building and Safety operates the permit service center. They do plan check and inspection. Economic Development is responsible for business assistance, attraction, retention, and expansion. They work with the PIO in marketing and promotion. And of recent, we've gotten into a lot of policy development with the council. And finally, Neighborhood Services oversees code compliance, graffiti removal, and licensing. And finally, neighborhood services oversees code compliance, graffiti removal, and licensing. We are a very outward-facing department. We, we, as I say, our bread and butter is community engagement and it's important for us to engage the community. We had, uh, plans for a lot of face-to-face engagement in many of our divisions. The rental rights program was set to go out and do the community outreach for recently implemented legislation, both at the state level with AB 1482, that was the rent cap, and the city's right to lease program. Those seem like distant memories, but they were on our, on our plan to get out to the community. The monthly housing subsidy program, really because of the, the population that we were dealing with, it was necessary to do face-to-face for most of them and we had to figure out a way to accommodate that. Economic development was Tech Week and Tech on Tap, those monthly programs where we bring the, um, the startup community together. We have two accelerator programs that we were getting ready to launch, as well as our work on Artsoc, both in designing and programming that street. Planning had the West Glendale Sustainable Transportation and Land Use project that they were working on, the housing element, the Verdugo Wash that was in last year's program. We were going to set up an urban design studio in the storefronts on Artsoc, and then they were also supporting the work there. Building and safety, we lose inspectors to retirement and this industry just is not replenishing them. We had an apprentice program for both high school students and veterans returning to, uh, inactive duty that we just had to cancel. And it was our way of, of repriming that pump and finally building in safety month. Because we are so outward-facing, we had to adapt literally every, every method of our operation. I think the Alfresco program is, uh, is representative of that adoption, how we were innovative and creative. We wanted to give the community the same end product, just using a different delivery method. Most of our staff was able to adapt remotely and move off-site when the shutdown orders were implemented. We did have about 20% of our staff in building and safety that remained on campus every day from March, and they're still there today. Our field crews in building inspection and neighborhood services, called them our field warriors, they have been on the job every day since March. They've been dispatched directly from home, but they're interacting with business. They're going into people's homes to do inspections and really intense interaction with the public. We adapted many of our processes to account for COVID. Some of them we will carry over because we just found efficiencies in them. Jason alluded to the land management system. I'll talk about it a little bit more and later on in the presentation, but digital plan check will be something that we carry over. Video conferencing in lieu of travel expense, we found that we can get a lot done and now we have the infrastructure in place for it. Some of the really exciting efficiencies we, we hope to pick up in inspection, both neighborhood services and building, will be through remote inspection. We see that we may be able to do our solar inspections, water heaters, simple things like that remotely. And so an inspector could do that from the office and, and maybe get 10 done a day, whereas if they were in the field, only four. We will look and see if HUD allows us to continue to do that with our section eight housing, but we will really, we'll have to rely on, on them. Some high-level accomplishments from last year, things we focused on. I think everybody will acknowledge that housing was a critical issue for many people in the country as well as Glendale. Our rental rights unit became the main source of information for both landlords and tenants. What do the orders mean? And those orders were changing weekly, sometimes even daily. They became that, that hub of information. Economic development played a similar role in, for, to the business community through, uh, and standing up several programs, assistance programs, we'll go into a little more detail with that division. Planning picked up where they left off in, with the DSP. If you remember, there was a lot of discussion about the pedestrian realm and how does the, how do buildings interact with that, with the sidewalk and do we make them wider? When I say we picked up where we left off, a lot of this year was geared towards the, uh, creating a safer pedestrian environment, make Glendale more walkable. Building and safety was perhaps our area of biggest accomplishment and the source of the most frustration to not only the community and, and I'm sure sometimes to you, council members, but to the staff as well. And we'll talk a little bit more about that and why it was. Neighborhood services, they played a key role in education and enforcement of the emergency orders. And, and again, we'll talk about their partnership with police going forward. In, uh, in our housing division, during this last year, you, council, achieved three projects that you actually scoped them, selected a developer, and set them on their way. You recently had approvals, key approvals for the Broadway projects. Those two projects are, will be going to design review, to the design review board and the Historic Preservation Commission later this month and next month. The rental rights program, as I said, became a main hub for information to both landlords and tenants. They took in almost 2,900 contacts, both email and phone calls. They moderated solutions to 80 different issues between landlord and tenant this year, really doing that voluntarily. They established and, and developed with the city manager's office graphics, two mailers that went out to educate people, as I say, on that statewide legislation, AB 1482, and the city's right to lease. Through our management, I'm sorry, our monthly housing subsidy program, we enrolled more than half of, of the allotted households and distributed over a million dollars to extremely low-income seniors, 75 and over, with one person in the household with a disability. In our emergency rental assistance program, we distributed 380 rental assistance grants. I would note here, the grants became available, we wanted to get the money out as quickly as possible. There just was no time to go and hire staff to do that. And so, um, through collaboration with our other departments, partners there, they lent staff to this program for almost a year. And so, we thank them for that. In the meantime, we were continuing with our, our normal processes and we created two long-term, um, housing assistance programs, the student rental assistance program with GCC and the family assistance program that partners rental assistance with education, job training, with our partners in community services and parks and, and the Verdugo Job Center. We conducted lotteries, one for nine homeownership units on Elm Street for a completed project there, and then three lotteries to replenish our waitlist for some of our own developed projects. I'm going to pause just for a second, or rather, I'm going to, I'm going to skip over section eight, and I want to come back to that and focus on that, um, that fund specifically later in the presentation. Economic development pivoted from becoming a, a work plan of attraction and growth to survival assistance. And we really, we don't say that lightly because many businesses were relying on the grants that we distributed, the information we distributed, and then the programs that we implemented. As I said, they were the hub of information, working with the PIO to disseminate information to the business community. They did that through our website, social media, but we also conducted webinars on specific programs where we brought Small Business Administration in and had them explain to Glendale business how they could access other resources. We established, the, the city council established a business recovery task force that really touched on the entire representation of the business community. They became a, as I say, a survival task force and helped with, um, the framework for a business recovery strategy, which the council adopted and implemented, providing over $3.5 million of financial assistance and programs to the business community. We distributed 300 grants, Measure S grants, in our first two rounds earlier in the year. Still have 185 of those to distribute. We will start our next round in mid-June. And then 51 grants went to businesses with more than half of their employees being of low-income households. We have another 63 of those grants that we'll be distributing in early June. I think our Alfresco program was really emblematic of, of the way that we operated, the innovations that we used, that the real goal was keep business in business, keep people in jobs. We assisted 91 businesses through the Alfresco program, the majority of them, 88 being restaurants. That program expires June 30th. Staff will be coming back to the council in May, May 25th. We have received some emails from the community, really like it and would like to keep it and have asked to keep it. We've heard from some businesses that would like to keep it. We have one group, the Montreux Shopping Park Association, that would like to remove it so they could go back to some normal programming. All told, we assisted over 6,000 businesses through the program. In a relatively new area for economic development, we became a, a resource for policy development for the business community and helped the council craft some of those. Mr. Garcia had talked about the hotel workers protection ordinance that was just at the tail end of last year, that economic development worked in concert with his staff. The delivery service fee cap was something that was important at the time through the pandemic, as more and more people were ordering out and having food delivered to them. Most recently, Hero Pay for grocery store workers. And then the economic development staff working again in concert with the city attorney's office and the city manager's office on the eviction orders for commercial evictions and, and how that applied in Glendale. We, as I said, we had adopted an accelerator program. We kicked off two, Kids X Digital Health Accelerators, the first pediatric accelerator in the world. That's in partnership with Children's Hospital Los Angeles. And then Hero House, which connects Glendale with Eastern Europe deep tech. Both of those kicked off. Kids X had 300 applications, they selected 13. They graduated their first cohort in April and we'll get some, we just had some information to you on that, um, in a weekly report. Hero House will be graduating their first cohort in June and we'll get some information out when that happens. Both are working with Glendale Community College for, to recruit their next cohort. As I said, in, in planning, we really picked up where we left off in, in creating a pedestrian environment, a safe pedestrian environment. Council recently adopted the pedestrian safety plan and so we'll move into implementation that, on that with Public Works. That is a long-term project that started in 2015. Slow streets was a, started as a temporary program, just to make people aware that there's others using the right-of-way besides cars, pedestrians and cyclists. That turned into a permanent program. The council has authorized that and will be implementing that soon with our friends in Public Works. And you've added painted streets to that, intersections and crosswalks to alert people that there's something else going on, slow down. Through my tenure here, there's always been the, the plea, the request, can you do something about slowing the traffic down on my street? Oftentimes, we're bound by warrants to put a stop sign or something. We really have found that people like the slow street signs and that seems to be slowing traffic for them. So, they like those in their neighborhood. We conducted the West Glendale Sustainable Transportation and Land Use Study and this was to look at, really from brand to the west side of town, in, in how do we create other modes of transportation, pedestrian and cyclists? The plan for that, we'll be coming back to you, but it, it blends nicely with Metro's BRT and we even have some opportunities to implement first mile, last mile improvements there. That work will also inform a lot of work that we do in the multifamily standards study that we're working on and our land use element that must be updated this year. Finally, on the plans, we have the South Glendale Community Plan, we'll be implementing the zoning. Council had approved that plan in, with the concepts and asked that the increased density be withdrawn from the program, with the exception of Tropico around the hospital. There is more density there that allows them to expand as they're required by the state. But otherwise, the densities don't change, but we do implement your, your concepts that are found in that plan. We have kicked off the Verdugo Wash study with a world-renowned architectural firm, MELK. We had our first, I'd say scoping in the wash, uh, two weeks ago, where the staff and, and the, the firm were actually in the wash and, and starting their work. Community interaction is most important to this team in planning and so they've, they have gone to a digital format. We prefer live and, and to talk to people in person, but we have gotten digital input from, through our housing element, the Verdugo Wash, West Glendale, and then land use and the housing element, circulation element. Those are all be things that, that we're looking for, input from the community. We'll have to do it through a digital means, if we can. While we're still working on them, we will plan community meetings in person later on in the year. Planning experienced a huge increase and I'll talk about it more when we get to building, uh, building and safety, but our code requires every project to have some level of design review. So, needs to go through planning to, okay, to go to plan check. So, every, every submission that came in was a submission for planning. We saw a 45% increase in planning just in pre-submitting applications. Those are pre-application meetings to work out some of things in a project, ask some questions and get direction on, on how to develop that. As I say, they're, they are directly tied to many of the issues that we experienced in building and safety. When I say earlier in the presentation that this was the, probably our biggest achievement, but our greatest source of frustration, means that we actually had a workable solution, but building a boat on the water would be easier than what the staff had to do. They were, they were not taking submissions for only one week. They continued to work on everything, but they put in place a, a, from an antiquated manual system, they put in place a digital system using the equivalent of yarn, bubblegum, and a few marbles. What I mean by that is they did not have the necessary tools, the appropriate tools, to be able to, to do that. We worked with what we had. The land management system that, that Mr. Bradford had alluded to earlier will take care of most, if not all, of these problems, but that is, as he said, a year away. In devising this system, we wanted to make it look and work like our normal process. We were, as I say, successful at getting a workable solution, but we had many issues and there are many reasons why. In terms of volume, the number of visits, I will say, that we had to the permit center and we compared people walking through the door to people that, that submitted something to our general mailbox, tripled. We went from 6,500 visits to over 20,000. The types of projects were smaller and required more handholding. Those smaller projects would have been handled very easily, either over the counter that day or within a day or two by that team. day or within a day or two by that team. Because they had to be taken into the system, they were treated like a major multifamily. They had to be treated like a major multifamily in terms of initial triage and taking them in. The backlog that was created is about double what we had. Contributing to this was the method of communication with our customer. It all had to be by email, back and forth, and I can tell you, if you and I are talking and I say, you know what, what kind of day do you think it's going to be today? And you say, it's going to be bright and sunny. And I say, you want to go to the beach? And you say, no, I'd rather go to the park. We can do that in 15 seconds. Though that interaction by email might take up to three or four days, because the email has to be sent, it has to be received, and it may not be right away, and it's being received within the normal plan check operation. Then it might be late at night, that gets sent back to the customer. Customer might not see it till the next morning. So you get the idea on how a simple exchange of information can add to the time. The plan check in general, we saw about six weeks added in just delay. What was six to eight weeks for first turnaround became 12 to 14. The ADUs, though, we shoot for six to eight weeks on those and for the most part have been able to stay on track with that. As I said, there were 10, about 10 staff in the permit center that never left all year. They were in work every day operating this. I think the KPI tells the story of this in terms of, I said that we were almost doubled in terms of visits, that's up 200%. Our building plan check slightly up. So that is the number of projects that would get a permit. The permits issued were down 11%. So not as many permits were being issued on a single project. The average valuation was down 56%. Building inspections down 13%. All of those are showing us that these are smaller projects that were being done in the last year. They're typically done by less experienced professionals that don't understand or know, not familiar with, I should say, our process. We had to bring things into the system as opposed to doing them over the counter. ADUs alone are up 57%. So there were a lot of people during the pandemic that said, now's the time to do the ADU. We do not see that slowing up. Building and Safety also has, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm still in buildings. Building and Safety also has inspection. This, again, one of our Field Warrior units on the job since day one, they have maintained a 24-hour turnaround on inspection. The only caveat on that is, it used to be if you called before 3:00 PM, you'd get it the next day. Today, you've got to call before 1:30 PM, you'll get it the next day. Neighborhood Services, another team that's been out there and dealing with the public since day one. They were really the interpreter and enforcer of county rules for us. They established a COVID unit that would specifically deal with COVID issues, and they really became an auxiliary to the police department, as you see on the left there. We would coordinate with GPD on, for different issues and different situations. There are times when it was better to send a code enforcement officer to take a look and provide whatever education to gain compliance. There are other times where it was better to send a badge, and so we worked with them to do that. During COVID, the team had conducted over 800 COVID investigations, about three per workday. And as I say, their objective was education and compliance. In addition, they became another source of information. We had a lot of business that would call code enforcement and say, the county just changed, can I do this? And so working with the manager's office, with economic development, they were able to push that out for us. Graffiti paintout is located within Neighborhood Services. We have two part-time employees, they both work between 25 and 29 hours a week. It's about one and a half full-time equivalent. I would say that, I do say that during this time off and on, one of those positions had a non-job-related injury, and so we were down a person for a lot of that time. I would say that we painted out 59,000 square feet of graffiti. That's down about 55%. So about the loss of that one person. We normally paint maybe 130,000 square feet. KPI, I've talked about some, many of these, almost all of these in the presentation, so I'll go through quickly. Here, the inspections for code enforcement, 10,900 non-COVID-19 inspections between dog licenses and business licenses, 3,600 licenses issued, and there you see the graffiti number. This is business assistance and economic development. We talked about most of these. You see up at the top, 26% office vacancies. That's up, it's 19, at 19%, I should say, from 15.2. So this is an area of focus for us as we go into recovery. Section 8 vouchers there, I'll talk a little bit about those and when we drill down on that one fund. Here you see rental rights, the 2,900 contacts, 500 units in development, and then our subsidy programs. Here's a big overview of community development. Our salaries and benefits are pretty static. You see big number for maintenance and operations. The lion's share of that is $36.8 million is our Section 8 funding. That's where that comes from. There's about $1.2 million there. It's really a reserve for Doran Gardens. If a unit comes up for sale in Doran Gardens, we have the opportunity to buy it, so we need funds available so that it maintain, we maintain that affordability on it. There's also some CPI in there. You're seeing 200,000 here. We also have 800,000, it's by Quirk, it's budgeted in with MNO, but it is for Artsoc, the initial construction phase of that. Position count, we're staying pretty lean. In fact, we've given up a full position to the organization to use elsewhere, and we cut as part of our reductions, we cut some hourly. So we'll be operating about six positions, full-time positions, less in the coming year. These are our funding sources, General Fund. There's a lot of, a lot of housing funds that fund your, our housing development and Section 8. You will see all of those in the housing budget that comes to you. It will be on June 8th when we bring the city budget as well. The Air Quality Improvement Fund, that's ride-sharing, it's from AQMD. And then you see the Capital Improvement and San Fernando Road, those are both CIP. San Fernando Road is a tax-sharing agreement we have with the county, and that will build certain infrastructure in the San Fernando Road corridor that is of regional benefit. I wanted to focus, highlight our housing assistance, Section 8 program. During COVID, the group maintained their high-performing agency status. They administered 2,650 vouchers, total vouchers. That is paying 1,160 landlords. And it's important to note that this group, along with finance, working with our finance department, they did not miss a single payment working remotely. It's 32,000 payments going to support those 2,650 households. What's even more important is the 1,160 landlords were receiving some level of rent. I think everybody has commented on landlords probably being the one group that doesn't have an assistance program that was designed for them. So we were, we were carrying our share of assistance and making sure that they were paid and doing our part. We produced 5,000 care packages for all of our tenants and landlords. We conducted, the council implemented, a landlord incentive program where we were able to promote 33 new landlords to the program during this last year. We brought back three more. We were able to pull 200 people from the waiting list in the last year, and we anticipate going forward, another 100 that we'll be able to. So we're making our way through that longstanding waiting list. The other program, Artsoc Avenue, is just, and you've designed it. You've given us the okay to start doing construction drawings. We're about halfway through that. Community Development is in the process now of handing that off to Public Works for the construction of that. We think construction starts spring of next year and should finish in the fall. Right now, we're cleaning up after the My Relics exhibit in our storefronts, and then those will be occupied by our pop-up program. So there's short-term tendencies to, one, see if their business is viable, but two, for us to see, do they work on the street? I would like to also announce, and you heard from Dr. Schaefer yesterday, the three pieces of art that are being commissioned by the Arts and Culture Commission. You've kind of set the direction on that for an iconic piece of sculpture on the south part of Artsoc. The Broadway signage that will go over the top, over the street, and then the over-street canopy that will be in the north part. This becomes just another amenity for us. And then wrapping up, where do we go next? The land management system is a critical piece for us. It will allow us to coordinate so much better as well as sign off digitally from wherever we are. We won't have to have people come in and physically do that. This, we lose staff for about a half a day most weeks in putting this together, much like the financial systems that we put in place a few years back, but it will be worth it. We believe that with this tool, we will be able to be open 24/7 and accommodate that additional volume, but at the timeframes that we are experiencing now. Affordable housing, we will continue our push through our assistance programs and looking for and developing new affordable units in town. Economic development, I think that going forward, this is going to be recovery, and business attraction is going to be the key for that. Two things that we want to focus on. One thing we're calling pivot policies. We're all going to recognize a different way of doing business, and the city that can create policies that will accommodate that new way of doing business will be ahead of the game in attracting business. We also think that it'll be important, you can go to anywhere in an office, and people are realizing now, they may not need as big a footprint in office space. So to establish ourselves and distinguish ourselves from others, we want to make sure that our place-making is solid, that we have places where people want to be either before or after work. Things like Artsoc Avenue, the Verdugo Wash, the pedestrian network that we're creating, Central Park, those things in addition to the open space that we're requiring through our DSP. Our existing Americana, Galleria, Kenneth Village, Montrose, those amenities are going to be things that single us out. In terms of exercises, I think it's important for us to do two things, and we've already started work with the Chamber on a survey to really, and do a professional survey to get with the business community and understand what their needs are going forward. That will help in those pivot policies. The second is to really look at our local economy and find out where did we get the biggest impact so that we can design programs around that. And then last, I think this is the year of the plan, we'll be finishing up on many of the things we started. You'll see the South Glendale Community Plan come back to you with implementation, the complete vision for the Verdugo Wash. The housing element must be completed by October of this year. We'll also be working on the land use element or circulation element. DSP updates will be forthcoming. The pedestrian plan is something, areas, opportunities for implementation. We'll be initiating a bicycle transportation plan update. The streetcar viability study, not to be forgotten, will be coming back to you in the coming months, as well as the finishing up of two historic districts. In closing, I would just like to thank the 135 or so men and women of community development that have continued to serve the community throughout this emergency, and thank the council for their support in all that we have done. With that, I have division heads and IRAM available for your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lanzepin. Are there any questions from my fellow council members?
Yes, I have a few.
Okay, Mr. Najarian.
Wow. I mean, wow, Phil, my head is so filled up. I thought I knew everything that you did, but I think I only got about half of it. So I'm really, I'm really impressed with the productivity of your department. I would like, and I know, I know, Phil, I mean, you're not the king of Glendale, somebody else has that, has that title, but you're doing a great job, I think, managing that department. You can't do it without your division heads. So can you please let us know and name them out so, so we know? Because, I mean, it's an incredible, I don't know even where to start, but just name them out first, because I know that you couldn't do it without them, number one, so.
I would be very happy to. Bradley Calvert oversees planning and most recently is taking the role of overseeing economic development with the departure of Darlene Sanchez and Jennifer Hiromoto. Peter Zolak oversees all of the housing as well as the Neighborhood Services function. Joseph Rodarte and Miro Lotzky, they oversee the planning, I'm sorry, Permit Service Center, all of plan check and all of inspection. And then Tom Arzad oversees the administration, and she too has filled in as the day-to-day manager for economic development. I will tell you, Mr. Najarian, that it is a lot of work, and we have a philosophy of intent-based leadership, where we're pushing decision-making down to where the information is, to the lowest level possible. So the 135 people in, in, and community development are making hundreds of decisions every day on their own as opposed to funneling them back up. But they do need the support that comes from those division heads and the direction, and the basic directions. Thank you very much for the comment.
I mean, yeah, I mean, it is very incredible, and I think you're keeping your budget contained. I know that you're keeping cost containment a priority. Your KPIs are off the chart, basically, for what you, for what you do, and especially in this COVID situation. You know, we get complaints all the time, or planning this and Neighborhood Services that, but I can't, I can't single that out. Every time I've come with an inquiry or a particular issue that a resident has, you guys have taken care of it like immediately. And not just because it's me asking for it, I know you would do that for any resident that came with a legitimate issue, you guys would look into it. So I'm really happy. You guys are off the chart, and I'm very pleased with your department and your budget. I mean, this is a budget, this is a budget study session, so this isn't, you know, sing the praises of Phil Lanzepin, but your budget, I think, is in great shape, and I think it is, as you said, a testament to all your 140 employees.
About 135.
135, so, I mean, I, all I can do at this point is give you kudos. I'll give you criticisms in private, but I don't have any of those. So at this point, I'm very happy with the way you're running and your budgeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Najarian. Anyone else? Councilmember Brotman.
Yeah, two or three things. So Phil, yeah, I echo Councilmember Najarian's comments. It is unbelievable when you see all the things, you know, presented together. It is, it is unbelievable when you see all the things, you know, presented together. Just, I had a few things. One, what, what role are you, is the department playing or will it play in facilitating all these programs that are coming out of Sacramento for rent forgiveness? I just saw a headline that the governor's putting up another $1.5 billion for grants to small businesses. Before I saw that, I mean, I was mainly thinking of this program that was launched to pay landlords 80% of the back rent, I think, from April 2020 to March 2021, and if, if, if the landlords took that 80%, then the rest would be forgiven. And if landlords didn't want to take that 80%, then they, then 25% of what to do would go to the tenant. But now, I think that they've even upped that, so now they're paying 100%. So what role do you guys play in making sure, you know, our residents, our tenants and our businesses are able to tap into that? Is that, is that something that, that we're gonna, we're gonna take some responsibility to, to do?
Yes, really, the, the housing division, and I should say, you know, you saw line items for, you know, an economic recovery program or an emergency rental assistance program, and it's a few words on a page, but it represents hours and hours of, of staff work and, and putting different pieces of that together. Much of that is directing people to resources. And again, I would say, this is the reason for the 2,900 contacts that our rental rights program has. They've gone way beyond that, and they have become that disseminator of information. We, there was, the CARES Act funding that came out, I want to say, four months ago, three months ago, that was going to cities of 200,000 or more, missed Glendale, because during our census, we were 195,000. So we didn't have any funds to directly implement. So it's working with those state agencies, getting the information, working with the public information officer, and I'll tell you, our social media has been a great avenue to get this information out. But to the extent we can, when we can go live and meet with people, this will be part of our community meetings in explaining different laws that apply to landlords and tenants as well as resources that are available. So we will really be the disseminator of information, helping people, and it'll be the same for business, much like we did. Some cases, we'll do webinars with, partner with the Chamber and do a webinar so we can get that information pushed even further out.
Okay, because there's just so much money coming down from the state, and I want to make sure our, our residents are fully tapping into that, you know, that they, that they, that they're aware. I'm less, I mean, I think small businesses probably have more wherewithal to figure it out, and, and there's fewer of them for us to communicate with, but to get out to the tenants so that they know that there's this, you know, there's basically this amazing pool of money that's coming, you know, that's coming to take care of this thing we've been struggling with all this, all this time, you know, the tenants that, that can't, you know, all the fights we've, we've heard, you know, about eviction moratorium and the deaths that have been built up, there's, basically, there's relief for that. So that's just one thing, I know you've got a lot on your plate, I just wanted to mention that as being something that we don't want to miss a step on that because it's money for our residents.
I will tell you that the, the emergency rental assistance program, and it was important, and, and we got to the right people, it was important for the city to do that, but it was a monumental task for the entire organization because we needed to, we needed to bring people from other departments to help with that. What we found is there was a county program that Glendale residents were eligible for. We were able to refer people to that in, in a fraction of the time. They had disseminated over $2 million to Glendale residents in that county program. So we think we can be even more effective at pushing that information out rather than getting the money and trying to do it ourselves, because we can never hire up a staff fast enough to get the money out.
Yeah, okay. The other one, I want to just go back to the alfresco and making that permanent. And what, what was, you said, you're hearing that Montrose Shopping Park doesn't want to keep the alfresco program? That really surprises me.
Again, Mr. Brotman, this, I, excuse me, but Councilmember Brotman, I think this is a subject that we will take up when we discuss this at council, when it comes to us. Let's concentrate on the, on the budget this morning.
Okay, well, I mean, there is a budget implication. If you're going to continue and make that permanent, you know, is that something that you're planning? Is that something you have in your budget to do?
Yes, the alfresco program, we have, I want to say it's $175,000. That will work with Public Works if the council chooses to make that permanent. There's some K-Rail we need to clean up and maybe some additional infrastructure, tables, chairs, umbrellas.
Okay. And then you've got a lot of plans, but are you looking at an east-west historic resources survey? I think that's something that we've talked about wanting to do. Is that something that's going to happen this year?
Yes, and I'd say that tentatively, we need to get through the South Glendale Plan first, and that has been held up in litigation, and we talked about that offline. We need to get through that, and then we would move to the east-west where we would do a, we would do a historic survey for that area.
And do we have that in our budget?
That, I don't, Mr. Calvert here? Mr. Calvert can answer for you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. Excuse me. We are using partial grant funding to do some of that work. The West Glendale Sustainable Transportation and Land Use Study is a body of that work, but we will need to identify additional funding for the larger community plan.
Okay, for the east-west historic, I'm talking specifically.
That is correct. That would be a part of that plan as well.
Okay. Got it. All right, thanks.
Okay, anyone else?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Kasakian?
Sure. In regards, I'm glad the historical plan for east-west Glendale was brought up. I'm curious to know, why is the South Glendale Plan litigation holding up the east-west project?
Just staffing resource.
So if we had more staff, or if we hired staff, we could possibly complete it, even if it's, if it's just staffing, then you have to let us know so we can provide more staff.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know that, I don't know that it would be efficient to hire staff to coordinate the consultant to do that, and then it be done and we have a staff person. But we can focus, we can refocus our staff that's working in historic preservation to that, if that's council's desire.
Well, I think if it's just staff that's going to coordinate a consultant, and a consultant will be the one doing it, then let's find a way to be able to have someone coordinate a consultant. It should not be an issue of trying to find someone. From what I understand, it's the consultant who would be doing the survey. I appreciate the work that everyone's doing, and I echo all the praise that my colleagues have showered upon staff. They all work hard, I know they work hard. However, we have to look at historical resources being an endangered species in this period of rapid development and overdevelopment and continued construction. So I understand that the pedestrian plans and other aspects are part of a holistic approach, and I respect that, but the most important thing and the most urgent need is to identify and mark structures that deserve preservation and our attention. And so whatever is needed from council, this being a budget study session, this is a time to ask us for those resources and tell us, this is what you need. The community is approaching us as their council representatives to ask you about this, to ask staff and to raise this issue. So I'm now the second council member, and I'm sure others will chime in to echo the importance of this, to make sure that, for the sake of people who are interested in purchasing properties and developing it, and for those who are interested in seeing the preservation of culture, that we identify at least what's historic and what will be I also want to ask about, you know, one of the things that caught my eye is dog licenses. And it may seem like an insignificant thing or odd thing to bring up in the grand scope of everything that you covered, and I appreciate the soups to nuts presentation that you provided. Why are we not outsourcing the dog licensing function to a third party? How much time is that taking from staff when they can be out there inspecting and doing other things?
I'll ask Mr. Zovak, or Mr. Brunell is on the phone, he can give you a better idea. I will say that they are, they're two different functions. If they were not doing dog licenses, they would, they're not qualified to be code compliance inspectors, but, Mr. Brunell, if you could answer the question?
This is John. Mayor and fellow councilmembers, we really, we've had a couple organizations that have come into us to offer their suggestions for doing so. We even checked with the city of Pasadena Humane and theirs, and since we already have the infrastructure built in, we've never even considered it beyond that point. And that, most of the time actually is spent with our admin staff processing the license. A small percentage would go back to the inspectors to do follow-up, just to make sure that, that those that have not renewed their registration were given notices to do so. But we can check that if, if that is the council's direction, we can definitely investigate that and see if it would make sense for, for the city to outsource that.
So this was a function that at one point was in the city clerk's office. I know that there were at least at one point, two staff people whose job was literally to go door-to-door throughout the city and make sure that people's dogs had licenses. It was somewhat of a, I thought, I don't want to be disparaging of the work that individuals did, but it was not a function that I felt best served the residents. It was eventually transferred to permit services because, and I'll, this will dovetail into my next point, of having all permit services in the city under one roof, having a one-stop-shop, which has been spoken about a number of times, like other cities do. But the dog licenses function is something that can easily be picked up by a third party that can do a much, I think, more efficient job, just as we've outsourced some other functions. And this is not to eliminate any employee positions. Take the people that we have, have them do something else, have them go door-to-door and leave door hangers about all the new programs that we have regarding rental assistance or whatever else the case may be. I, I think that's a much more valuable use of our staff interactions with the public than going and only capturing some of the dog numbers that we have in the city, because I'm sure we have 3,000, more than 3,000 dogs, and if we just find a private party that will give revenue to the city, be able to track it with veterinarians, given the vaccinations that dogs are to receive, most people, everyone who gets a dog will get them vaccinated, I think they can do as, as good a job, perhaps even better. In terms of permit services, I think that it's been very, very, we all know it's been a very, very busy time, but I think that one of the things I've, in my time here at the city, as city clerk, now on council, that would be great is to see a, a one-stop-shop. I know there's been efforts to move towards that, but I'd like to know if it's truly realized. I continue to hear comparisons to other cities, and the last thing a council person who is proud to serve and live in a city wants to hear is, well, this city does it better. Most notably Pasadena's Permit Services Center is always brought up as an example if any of the staff or my colleagues have been there. You walk in, there's a kiosk, you tell them what you're there for, and they point you to whatever windows you have to go to, to get whatever it is that you're there to get done. I think that there may be some physical limitations with your location to be able to do something like that, but, you know, we certainly should look into finally making that happen, because it's something that's been spoken about for at least 15 years since I've been here, and it has never actually happened. I think it's, it's time that we look at that, we look at ways of doing that, both in person and digitally. I wanted to find out what was happening. I know that at one point, there was, when Nestle departed from the city, there was an effort to scramble and try to get in touch with businesses and find out how to retain them, I think it was called the GRIT Initiative, or I don't know what the exact acronym stood for, quite honestly. But I wanted to know what we're doing in that regard, given that we're going to have a number of, you know, this economy, as we emerge from it, bounce back, we see inflation numbers going up, are indicators of oncoming inflation on the horizon. What are we doing in terms of talking to folks, talking to the businesses for retention? And in addition to that, I want to know whether we're working closely, whether staff is working with, for instance, our local Realtors Association to find out what spaces are available? I feel like, you know, before, when a space becomes available, people are going to go to a Realtor before they're going to come to the city. And I know that we're always looking to attract new businesses that make Glendale an attractive place to visit, to come to spend their money. Do we have a representative on staff that's on regular contact with the Realtors Association when they do their little rodeos on a weekly or monthly basis to find out, you know, what's available out there in terms of the stock? What are the trends that we're seeing? What is the trends regarding commercial real estate or, or housing trends? And if not, can we do that?
Mr. Kasakian, members of the city council, yes, we do. We have, we have relationship with brokers. We use many of the same resources that, that they do to know of property. We do try and stay in touch with the business community so that where we can be most effective is when something is not listed. Once it's listed, everybody knows it, you go to a broker. If we know that something may be coming up, or we know the area and might be able to put somebody together, that's where we're most effective. In terms of, have we been out talking to business? Quite honestly, we've been trying to keep our head above water, standing up the, the different assistance programs, but it will be something that we have to do, and that's in that, that last slide that we talked about. Going to business and asking them, what do you need, so that we can tailor our different programs and policies to what business needs. So yes, it will be something that we do outreach with the business community, with Realtors, brokers will be critical for us.
I apologize for how I word my questions, because the one thing I hate is yes-or-no answers. Sometimes they're useful, sometimes they're not. I should have asked, how are we doing that? What is the process? I'm certain that there's some effort, you said, about using similar tools as the Realtors do. How are we communicating with the Realtors Associations? Do we have, as we have with other associations, a person who's regularly attending their meetings, for instance?
I, I don't, and now I simply do not have the staff for it, but we will, we can, if they're open to it, we would do that as a way, and it's a good point, because they do know. In the past, we would work with the Business Managers Association in, in building, Building Office Management Association, BOMA, to understand what, what their needs were, what their vacancies were. Having somebody at the broker meetings on a consistent basis will be important. I know we've spoken to them about major issues and gotten their input, but we will work that into our program.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Phil, for this report, and I too am kind of a, my, boggled mind with all that you're doing and your staff, but I do want to say that I think when you mentioned adaptability, that how staff has picked up the slack after you lost a couple of key staff members, so kudos to them. My concern is in planning and this backlog and how the, the process has, I guess, permit processes has six-week delays. In the current budget, would you have a, a place for an outside consultant or outside professionals to come in and, in the future, to kind of catch up on these, this backlog? Or do you think that once we open up, that staff will be able to handle the backlog and move it through quicker?
We, we, two things. With a third party, much of the, much of the delay is happening on the front end when we have to coordinate and triage that plan. we have to coordinate and triage that plan that comes in and where it needs to go. The communication with the customer is going to be the same, whether it's us or, or the third party. And, but a third party, you know, they could say, all right, you got to work until you drop dead to do it, I suppose. And then on the back end, at when we need to coordinate actual sign offs. So remember, building, and we may have a six, we may have added six weeks to our, our process, but we're just the last stop. And in between, there are other departments. And, and I know GWP had a, a really hard time. They lost some key staff. And so they had a hard time. When it backlog in GWP, we can't move forward and issue a permit. Fire has been pretty good because they, they too have been, fire prevention team has been in the office every day, somebody. And, and so we're able to do that coordination. I do believe that once we're able to open and get back to a normal process, we should be able to clear out that backlog. And then certainly, once the LMS system is up, we would be able to take care of that very quickly. All those coordination issues go away. Staff has talked about, because the city manager has offered, and, and, you know, much as I'd like to have the resource and, and say, go do it, I'm not sure that it would save us the time to where it would be worth the expense. We will look at it again, though, and, and will continue to do that. Because as we open to the public, as we get further into June and start opening to the public, we're still going to need to keep two different, a digital process and an in-person process. And if you saw the picture, if you remember the picture of the, the permit center, it's packed. People are shoulder to shoulder. We can't do that level of volume in person. So unless we were just going to completely stop to a trickle, we need to keep two processes going. That may be where we need additional help.
Madam Mayor, members of city council, I also like to add that coincidentally, I have a meeting set up with Mr. Lanza Fain and his staff in open expectation to be able to improve, as Phil mentioned, that front end coordination between the departments in some innovative ways, some alternative means of maintaining communication with the applicants as we move forward and as we bring folks back to the office.
Right. And Mr. Lanza Fain, you mentioned loss of staff. Is that because of retirements or is there another reason for that? And are they being replaced so that we can get back to at, at least, you know, the staff that we had previously?
You mean in the building and safety division? Yes. It's combination retirements and leaving for, for better opportunity. And yes, we will be replacing them. Big loss for us was our building official. Yon left, and for personal reasons, but he retired earlier than we thought. Mr. Lotzky has taken that role, building official, and he's actually doing two jobs, building official and the principal plan checker. We will be recruiting for that. It's a trickle effect, though, because we have, we have the talent in-house that replaces, and so we need to go through those steps to where we get down to the entry level and we're bringing somebody in from the outside. But yes, we are replacing those. In the inspection area, we've lost one to opportunity and two to retirement. Those are being refilled. Interestingly enough, that's the team that has really stayed pretty static and on top of things with that 24, I should say, next day guarantee of, of inspections. The answer to your question is yes, we are replacing them.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for the report. And we'll be looking forward to the upcoming year of recovery. Thank you. Next, Mr. Villanion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of city council. Next is Public Works. This would be the last department, but certainly not the least. And Mr. Yazdon Imroni, as he's getting settled in, will provide that presentation for you.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of city council. Yazdon Imroni, Director of Public Works. It is my pleasure to talk about, obviously, my favorite department and what I think is one of the best departments that the city has. So with that, I'll go ahead and get started. I would like to, before kind of delving into my presentation, take a minute and thank my staff. They've done a great job through this past year, through the COVID and all the challenges associated with it. Specifically are the assistant directors, Mr. Edward Hitty, who's the Assistant Director for Engineering, Mr. Kevin Todd for Facilities and Fleet, Mr. Dan Hardgrove for Integrated Waste and Maintenance Services, and our Transit Manager, Martha DeAndrea, as well as our Senior Public Works Analyst, Mr. Shay Eccleston. And all the staff that have helped put together this report, they've done a fantastic job. In terms of the mission of Public Works Department, we are a unique department in terms of, we're both outward facing, deal with the public as well as inward. We also provide services to our internal clients, which are the other city departments. And this, we try to do through a balanced effort to maintain a cost effective, cost effective operation and to provide these services in a responsible and efficient manner. We're composed of six main divisions. Administration, which is the overall administrative and management of the, the department, which also has the transit section as part of it. Engineering, which is comprised of the design section. We do a large part of our own design in-house. And we have construction inspection, and also our permit section is also part of our construction inspection, all the encroachment permits, having to do with the public right of way. And this division also includes parking, the parking section. The facilities management division includes all the facilities repair, the custodial services, and is responsible for doing the, implementing the city's internal CIP, capital improvement projects, with respect to the city facilities and buildings. Fleet Services is comprised of fleet. We're responsible for the procurement of all of the city vehicles. We have our own maintenance garages, fully staffed, that take care of the maintenance and upkeep of those fleet. Integrated Waste, which is responsible for the solid waste pickup and disposal and everything else that goes along with it, recycling and managing the recycling center. Maintenance Services is comprised of street maintenance services as well as sewer maintenance. So all in all, we have a very talented group of folks that take care of the city's business on a daily basis. Eighty percent, almost, of our staff throughout this pandemic period has been here, day in and day out, picking up trash, filling potholes, responding to calls, service calls. And these are the, obviously, the type of services that you cannot telecommute. The other 20% have also been here, but those are office staff. And, you know, in combination, I think we have a very fantastic group of folks that do a great job, day in and day out. Now, where did we start? This is actually late 2019. This is December of 2019. This was the last time we were able to get together, most of us, to take a group photo. And we also were, you know, the good old days that we could do our work in the field without wearing a mask. So we went from those elements to, to this, wearing masks and maintaining the six-foot separation for our, for our office staff, as well as wearing masks out in the field. So we have adapted and made sure that we can still get the cities and the residents' businesses done. So this year, we spent time focusing on some of the most important and pressing challenges of COVID-19 that COVID-19 presented. This presented some opportunities also. We were able to complete or accelerate a lot of our street rehab and traffic improvement projects. We provided, as I mentioned, uninterrupted service for solid waste collection and disposal. We retrofitted, adapted, and secured cities' facility during the pandemic. There were some beeline service changes and enhancements which we implemented. And we completed a, we also did sewer line replacement and pump station upgrades, completed the first ever automated and comprehensive pavement management program for the city. And last, but certainly not least, completed the beeline maintenance facility projects construction. In terms of infrastructure and mobility, street rehab and traffic improvement projects, as we know, well-maintained local infrastructure and transportation systems that are functional, in optimal condition, and meet the need of the cities. Multifaceted community is one of our highest priorities. So when COVID-19 hit, we knew we had an opportunity to complete some of these projects without the usual delays associated with the traffic. So we were able to successfully transition several of these capital improvement projects, which include San Fernando Road, Highland Avenue, and Verdugo Road. These three projects combined, we were able to pave approximately three miles of the city's roadways. We installed or replaced almost 17,000 linear feet of curbs and gutters, 88,000 square foot of sidewalks and other concrete improvement, and upgraded 83 ADA curb ramps. We also upgraded traffic signals at four intersections and planted 119 new trees. In terms of our, having a safe and healthy community, solid waste collection was very critical. It had to continue, obviously, uninterrupted. We had a lot of challenges. Obviously, COVID-19 also impacted our, our staff. But we worked very hard to make sure that the solid waste collection happened without delay and without interruptions. There were some, obviously, issues that came up from time to time, but all in all, our staff, along with some maintenance contracts that we had in place, emergency contracts to help us with this effort, we were able to do the refuse collection, recycling, bulky item pickup throughout the pandemic. And again, a shout out to all the folks, all of our integrated waste management drivers and supervisors for a fantastic job they did during this period and continue to do so. I mentioned that we're also a, provide services for our internal clients, which are other city departments and all the facilities throughout the city. When pandemic hit, we retrofitted and we provided some enhancements. We, our custodial service increased their disinfection of city facilities, for those facilities that were, that we kept open for the, the employees that were working there. We installed Plexiglas shields at all the public counters and offices. We covered contact services with antiviral coatings. And we also included security for the buildings. So essential facilities such as fire stations, the police building, and our maintenance yards remained open and operational. Beeline service, there were, just before 2020, the council adopted some changes to our beeline services. So when we were hit with the pandemic, we basically used CARES Act funding to keep our transit services operating. We went fearless. We stopped charging fares for anybody who wanted to take the bus. Initially, our ridership declined. It still has declined, hasn't come back fully up. But we did what we could to keep the buses safe for the folks that are using it by disinfecting and wiping the buses on a regular bas, basis, enforcing mask guidelines, and installing Plexiglas shields. For safe and healthy community, again, an element of what we continue to do is upgrading and replacing sewer lines and performing some pump station upgrades. We replaced a couple of the pumps at our Doran Pump Station. And also, we completed several capital improvement projects, most of them associated with the street rehab. So we tear up the street only once and replacing the sewer line, sewer lines along with that. And this has increased our reliability and dependability of our sewer system. And we continue to plan for more of these projects because our sewer system is very old and aging and needs to be continuously upgraded. I mentioned the pavement management program. This was the first time that we used an automated system to go through and measure all the distresses in the pavement and take continuous pictures and videos so we can develop a comprehensive action plan for addressing the needs that we have in our, on our streets. So this was a very successful project. We, we're working on finalizing our five-year CIP for addressing the issues with the condition of the pavement. And this is something that we're, we've integrated into next year's budget and will continue to use as a roadmap. I should mention here also that we, at Public Works, we also rely on the use of technology a great deal. We use GIS. This is the map on the right-hand side that shows all the different pavement condition indexes color-coded by the, the numbers. So we use GIS quite a bit in terms of our decision-making. We use GIS also in our permitting for wireless companies. We have all the location of the, the cell towers or antennas mapped throughout the city. And so we, we do this to maximize our efficiency as, as we go through these different types of projects. Beeline Maintenance Facility, the construction was almost completed by the time the pandemic hit in March. There were a few other items that had been left over, but we were able to move forward with the punch list, completed the construction, and we were able to move our staff into the building, as well as our contractor who manages the, our buses. And the building is fully functional and occupied. And this is the first time that the city's transit service has had a home. They've never had a home or maintenance facility. So it's a fantastic accomplishment in terms of, you know, being able to have a permanent home for our, our staff, as well as for our buses and the operators. And as, and as made the, our transit system, our transit system was already, I think, one of the cream of the crop, but it continues to move in that direction. And I think we kind of stand on our own in the region. So KPIs. We have a lot, so I try to just highlight some of, some of them here, but there's a ton of KPIs that we, that we use and monitor on a regular basis. But quickly, just to give you some ideas, we collected 87,000 tons of refuse over the last year. We collected 10,200 tons of recyclables, 3,400 tons of bulky and abandoned items. Our service center, our call center at Integrated Waste answered 110,000 service calls. We laid down 70,000 square foot of asphalt. We filled 3,300 potholes, repaired 30,000 square foot of sidewalks, and cleaned 1.12 million linear feet of sewer lines. And internally, we And internally, we responded to 11,350 of what we call facility service requests from other departments within the city. There are two other KPIs that was mentioned earlier, working together with Community Development Department in regards to Slow Street Program and Alfresco Dining Program. Our staff installed 300 signs, Slow Streets signs, and replaced many of them and continued maintenance on them as much as we could. And the, in terms of the Alfresco Dining Program, we installed close to 1,400 feet of K rails in both the downtown Glendale and Montrose area in 24 locations. So this is a high-level summary of our department budget. Our proposed 21, 22 salaries and benefits are $34.2 million. Our MNO, Maintenance and Operation Budget is $100 million. And our capital outlay is $10.3 million. The capital outlay basically is most of our capital fleet purchases. And the capital improvement is basically all of our programs that we do, everything CIP-related, Measure R, gas tax, sewer fund project, everything that we do in terms of our, our capital improvement program. Our general fund, we only receive about $14.7 million or 8.7% of our budget through the general fund. And the rest come from various different funding sources and enterprise funds. In terms of number personnel, we are maintaining 283, almost 284 people full-time and 24 people part-time for a total headcount of 308 people. This slide, this slide shows the different funding sources that we have. As I mentioned, the funding, the general fund is a small portion which decreased because we cut the crossing guard program and we had some reductions in our training programs. Our parking fund is going to be decreasing in funds for next year mainly because of the fact that we're, we suspended for a time our enforcement and our garages also did not, they were free. They're coming back as the businesses are coming back. But we are basically being conservative in our projections. Also, the Alfresco Program, although a great program because it utilizes the parking meters, it's going to have an impact on our revenues. So that's the reduction on that. As you can see, again, we have a lot of different funding sources that we utilize for our projects. Here's another listing of our projects. Again, we have our, our transit funds, our capital improvement fund, our gas tax fund, our, our sewer fund. Some of these, for example, the sewer fund has decreased because the majority of it, or almost $20 million of it is spent in terms of the projects we have with Lagwerp, L.A. Glendale Water Reclamation Plant, and goes towards paying for the, the cost of the sewer treatment at Hyperion. So their projection for City of L.A. has gone down a little bit. And that's, that's why it's, you're seeing it's decreased. Our, and then we have the refuse fund, fleet management fund, and the building maintenance fund. I'll be talking about a couple of these funds in more detail. So speaking of the refuse fund, we are increasing, requesting an increase in appropriations for next year. This is mainly because of several factors. Obviously, one of them is the recycling center. As we brought before your council, the Allen Company, we have to start paying them as opposed to them paying us. So some of the increase in cost is due to that. However, we are also, as a result of the franchising, we're retiring our, our equipment that are associated with the commercials and multifamily residential. But we have an aging fleet of side, side loaders, basically, that we have to upgrade. So a lot of those costs are the additional capital costs that we need for those purposes. The sewer fund, as I mentioned, is decreased because of the projections that we received from City of L.A. Mainly, however, we do have a robust set of projects that we would like to implement our ongoing sewer replacement throughout the city next fiscal year. I'm hopeful to start our first phase of CCTV or TV inspection, closed-circuit TV inspection of our sewer lines. We really need to know what's going on, what's going on underneath our streets. It's the old adage, out of sight, out of mind. And CCTV is the best way to know what we're dealing with, where the, our hotspots are, and where, how do we need to focus our capital projects? It's, this is very similar to our pavement management program where we do the, where we just finished doing the automated videotaping of the, and the, taking pictures of all the, of our streets. Now, this would be done inside the pipe and will pinpoint all the cracks and holes and everything else that is happening down there so we can develop a capital improvement program accordingly. Just some stats, our local system treats 13 million gallons of wastewater per day. Our staff cleans 1.2 million linear feet of sewer mains annually. And we are continuously working to reduce the frequency of the sanitary sewer overflows that we unfortunately experience from time to time. In addition, as I mentioned, we have some capacity improvement programs, our sewer reconstruction program and rehab. And of course, the, our continuing payments to the city for our treatment costs as well as the L.A. Glendale Reclamation Plant. State Gas Tax Fund, the average pavement condition index was 72, which is satisfactory. However, we want to keep that going with continuing on our CIP projects. So some of our upcoming programs that we have include our street tree maintenance, which is about $660,000. Our street resurfacing program at 1.3 million. Broadway Avenue Rehab is one of the projects that, along with Verdugo, that I was mentioning on Tuesday night as part of also the Senate Bill 1, SB 1 appropriations. So those are some of the programs that we're looking at and hoping to continue to expand the resources needed to maintain our pavement condition index at 72. So what's next for Public Works Department? We have a lot of challenges, but a lot of opportunities ahead of us. We are, of course, going to be focusing on our capital programs are in different, in terms of streets, sidewalks, curb and gutters, sewer and storm drain programs, obviously. Also, we're going to be looking at internal capital projects to, for the upkeep of the city's facilities and buildings. In terms of our sustainability program, we have a long list of projects that we do. We're going to continue that this year, going into 2022. Of course, one of our biggest challenges is SB 1383 implementation with the organics recycling program. So that's something that we're going to keep a close eye on and monitor as we move forward. Implementation of the franchising program, that's never been done in the city. That's going to be a huge step for us to, to manage and make sure it's implemented successfully and without any hiccups. We're also looking at the next steps in our electrification plan for our fleet. We're embarking on a electrification feasibility study, which is going to get underway hopefully soon. In addition, we're looking forward to getting the results of our beeline electrification feasibility study that we're doing in conjunction with Pasadena and Burbank. The results of, that are going to be published by fall of this year. And we're looking forward to moving forward with the implementation of those elements along with the capital purchases and the infrastructure upgrades needed for those elements. We're also working on our automated container replacement. As per our report the other night, although we have a, Cal recycle has given everybody 14 years to do this, we're hoping to replace all the containers in the city within the next five years. We're working on an upgrade of the seismic upgrades for the fire stations, moving forward with an RFP to upgrade two of those stations with the 3.25 million in Measure S that we have to do the whole, all of the fire station seismic upgrade. The estimate that we came up with was $16 million. So there's an additional $13 million that would be needed. And these are some of the elements. And of course, the continued health and safety. Again, our custodial staff do a great job in their work disinfecting and wiping down of the counters and the restrooms and, and all the offices throughout the, throughout the city. And then working hand-in-hand with Community Development Department in terms of the next phases for the Slow Street and the Alfresco Program. Some of the other programs also include working with our parks and Community Services and Parks Department. In the upcoming Fremont Park renovation, we are the construction managers for that project. So that would be the implementation of that project. The Central Library Youth Center, working with libraries in terms of upgrading that, that space. And we're going to embark on a facilities condition assessment for all of our facilities. My goal is to get out from this, what I call firefighting business, which is putting out fires when there is a leak in a, in a roof or an element that comes up that we're, we're not aware of it, to have a thorough understanding of where the needs are in all of our facilities and develop a robust CIP to address those and get in front of the issues before they, they get out of hand. So that's one of the, some of the other elements that we are looking at. And we're also looking at some, our emergency preparedness. We're in the process of putting together the final touches on a master debris management plan and reviewing the emergency contracts for hazmat services, fuel, debris removal, and all other elements that go along with that. That's my presentation at this point, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Imraney, very much. Again, a lot of work that you do. And I've said this before, and I'll say it again. You, when you were hired, you hit the, hit this street running or hit the road running, and I appreciate that. Do I have questions and comments from my fellow council members on this report?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Councilmember Brotman.
Yes, thank you. So Yazdun, I know you, you've got a huge task because you've identified a lot of areas that have deferred maintenance. And I wanted to get you to comment a little bit more on that. Like with, I know with, with our, with our roads, you've got the pavement management program has identified, you know, what, what we've been, I guess, under, underspending in terms of, you know, maintenance. And you've at least identified what it would cost for us to, to keep that pavement condition index steady. But, and, and you've mentioned the sewers and planning to do that CAT TV. What are some, and also you, I know there's Urban Forest Memo you're gonna, you're going to be presenting, I think, on Tuesday, which also identifies, you know, that we've, we've just not been spending what we need to maintain our forest. I note that we've lost 1,100 trees in the last 10 years, you say. And we've kind of gone to a cycle of repair that's, or of maintenance that's not optimal. And so in all these areas, we just have a huge backlog. And I, and, you know, I was going to ask you first, what other areas besides, you know, roads, roads and, and roads, sewer and, and urban forest? What are your other main, you know, concerns where we've got deferred, we've got deferred maintenance issues? And, and then if you could just circle back, and, and we could possibly hold this to Tuesday on the, on the trees, on the urban forest. Because I'd like to know, you know, what would be the cost for us to make up that, that loss of, of tree canopy over the last 10 years? And also to bring that maintenance timing back to every six years as opposed to every nine years?
Madam Mayor, Members of City Council, Councilmember Brotman, absolutely. We have many other areas, storm drain system. Although we don't own a majority of the catch basins, however, we are looking at implementing a storm drain master plan next year to get a handle on the condition of the ones that we do have. And of course, they're all interconnected with L.A. County Department of Public Works catch basins. We want to get an idea of the flooding areas that are prone to flooding and again, get in front of them before, before they get out of hand. So we're going to be implementing that. The, we just, as you mentioned, we have a CIP program based on the sewer master plan that we just completed. So we know at least about some of the areas that we're going to need to upgrade and, and update. The other elements that we're looking at are the city facilities that we're going to be implementing the facilities condition assessment, looking at all the buildings that we have, and then assessing their needs in terms of repair and upgrade. And also looking at opportunities, obviously, to make them more efficient. For example, if we, you know, can install solar panels, et cetera, and, you know, make it more efficient. We're going to look at the lighting, go to LEDs where we can in these facilities to make them, again, more, more cost-effective. These, these are some of the other areas that we're looking at and trying to come up with what we can to address and get ahead of the problem before, before they catch up with us. If we identify these and address them in time, it's much cheaper to take care of them as opposed to when they break, when we have to pay four to five times or even more to take care of the issues.
And, and on the urban forestry, you want to just hold that to Tuesday? I mean, it is a budget issue, and I definitely want to make sure that we are doing what we can to, to start to repair the damage of the last 10 years. Are you going to be, are you going to be able to give us some numbers on what that would cost on Tuesday? Or do you have them now?
Yeah, I'll be able to give those numbers to you next Tuesday.
Okay, but that's not in your current budget, right?
That is correct. We, I can, I'll, I'll just talk in general about, right now, we've appropriated or we've requested the funds and we have a, we're going on a, almost a nine-year cycle for our tree maintenance. We used to be on a six-year cycle. Now we're going on a nine-year cycle, which is part of the reason that we're falling behind in terms of, you know, net gain in terms of the number of trees. So we will have some numbers for you in terms of what it would take to catch up and stop the, the loss, basically. And furthermore, what can we do to come up to at least a net zero and start gaining and increasing our tree canopy throughout the city?
Okay, thanks a lot.
Anyone else?
Mayor. Mayor Devine.
Councilmember Kusakian.
Thank you. Thank you, Yazdun, for that presentation, Mr. Imraney. I want to thank you primarily for this pavement management survey, which I think was an important achievement. achievement, long overdue, and really paints a very interesting picture. Provides us with actual figures, tells us where we are, where we need to go, and where we will be if we maintain the current path that we're on. So in regards to what it would take to improve and bring our roads up to a place where they will sustain the city for the next 25 years, I think, given what we are seeing with our budget and what is coming in the foreseeable future, I, I can't see any other way than to look for a large infusion of money to help us handle this. And one of the sources of funds, which has always been the gas tax, seems to be dwindling and lessening by the day, so, and God knows what will happen to it, given what the most recent actual or imagined gas crisis may be. I'd like us to consider as a body, and I'd like staff to bring forth options to study and learn about maybe a general obligation bond or some bond measure that we can use part of it to fund the improvements that we need. It is something that's going to come to fruition, whether it's now or later, and given interest rates, I think now is as good a time as any to at least start that discussion and looking at it earnestly. And I see that, Madam Mayor and my fellow council members, as one way of plugging this hole, or at least providing a fix that will provide this community with an ease of mind, and also our roads are an integral part of our economic vitality and one of the reasons why people will want to come and visit Glendale and open up businesses in Glendale. I'd also like us to know, I believe Councilmember Najarian was talking about this through his role at the MTA, but I know that MTA is moving towards a fair, free model for transportation. I would just like us to know what, and it has been brought back in various other presentations, but instead of me going back to look at those videos, that may even be a little outdated by now, to know what the impact would be on our budget if we were to go to a fair-free model, and what the options would be if it was for students or seniors, whatever the case may be, just a couple of options. Gold, silver, bronze model, perhaps, if we were to look towards, moving in that direction. And in terms of urban forestry, I, I support the questions and echo the questions that were asked by Councilmember Brotman. I also want us to look at what other cities are doing. I've mentioned this a few times about when we do plant new trees, how to put pipes right at their base so we can provide water directly to them and have those trees grow healthier and faster, and rather than the roots trying to inch towards other water sources such as pipes and getting into people's pipes, to be able to provide a more efficient way of watering those trees, and so we can increase that tree canopy. We've always prided ourselves on being a green city in terms of the canopy, in terms of our natural beauty, and I'd like us to, I'd like us to explore ways of doing that as well, and what the costs would be associated with doing that. Thank you. And with that, I want to commend your staff. I know you work very hard. There's a lot that you are responsible for, but I appreciate what you do and what your staff does to make the city look the way it does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I do have a caller on the line.
All right, thank you. Let's take them. Thank you.
Hello?
Herbert Milano, you're live. You have three minutes, Herbert.
Thank you. Mayor Devine, Members of the City Council, my name is Herbert Milano. For nearly 20 years, I've been pleading to the City Council to fund road maintenance and sidewalk maintenance adequately. The deterioration is clearly visible to anyone paying attention, and many neighborhoods look blighted because of the severely deteriorating conditions of the pavement and sidewalks. So I want to thank Mayor Devine for the interest she took on the rehabilitation of Doran Street. I wish all of our roads south of the 134 freeway were of that quality. We have 360 miles of roads, and the average life of a roadway is 20 years. Yet we have roads that have not been reconstructed in nearly 50 years. In a conversation I had with Mr. Galanian when he was the head of Public Works, he mentioned to me that the city needed to budget about $50 million annually to adequately meet, meet the needs of the city. I understand that the city cannot fix the roads with water mains, sewers, and storm drains below them need replacements and are not adequately funded annually. In a critical way, the insufficient CIP funding of the Glendale Water and Power creates a constraint to pavement reconstruction. I'm suggesting that the City Council take a look at the gap in the CIP, what the city should fund, and not necessarily what it's funding now. I invite the City Council members to walk for one half hour with me, and I can show you directly the deteriorating pavement conditions south of the 134 freeway. But most importantly, I suggest you get a report from the Capital Improvement Project Plan of GWP and Public Works, and get a history of the expenditures and the funding needed to reduce the significant backlog of repairs. Bulk activity numbers don't tell you the full story, and are not true KPIs. It is the gap that merits your attention. If the city reconstructs three miles out of 360 miles, when you need to reconstruct 15 miles annually for the next 10 years, that is a more significant way of giving you awareness of a need to be funded. The average pavement index does not give you the full picture of the pavement conditions that we really see and experience south of the 134 freeway. I would appreciate if the city can take a strong look at the CIP in a more encompassing way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Milano, very much for your comments.
Then, Mayor?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Najarian.
I'll be, I'll be brief. I don't know if we're running over a lot of time or not, but I'd like to thank Yazdan for all his work. You also have a very wide and far-reaching department, but I specifically want to thank you with the work that you're doing to improve transit and completing the B-line maintenance facility and working with us, trying to get a electric transit bus pilot going, working with us on the BRT, sorting out the bugs and the routes, and keeping the B-line system as it goes. As far as the, the streets go, did, did we put some money from our Measure S allocations into street repair?
Madam Mayor, Members of City Council? Yeah, Councilmember Najarian, staff has made a recommendation to be included in the Measure S funds, and that will come up for your consideration again and approval.
So I, I agree, I agree with Mr. Kusakian that we need a significant infusion of funding. I'm, I'm not sure I want to put, I would go so far as getting to a bond measure yet. The state of California has like $75 billion in surplus. I think it would be a worthy effort to speak to our elected representatives there, Ms. Friedman, who sits on the state trans, chair, actually, of the State Assembly Transportation Commission, as well as Senator Portantino, who is head of appropriations, to see if they can help us with infrastructure. I mean, everyone, the buzzword in the past month has been infrastructure, mainly at the federal level, but there's no reason we can't pursue it at the state level. But in addition to the federal pursuit, we should continue a federal pursuit of infrastructure, and if the state knows what we're looking for, presumably this funding will go through the states, but we need to, I think, make some noise to our state representatives, and obviously, infrastructure is something that is very worthwhile, and as, especially in pavement, as we know, if we delay pavement repair, the rebuilding and restructuring of those roads is much, much more expensive as time goes on. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Yazdan, for this report. I have a little bit of good news from the League of Cities Conference yesterday. There is a Senate bill, this is in regards to the S, the 1383, and the ordinance that we just introduced the other night to be in compliance with 1383. SB 619 is a bill, pending bill, which would help fund cities for implementation of 1383. There will be, they're proposing between $200 and $250 million to help cities get this program up and running, or at least started in, in our municipalities. So there is a little ray of hope there for us. I have a meeting tomorrow through the legislative days and League of Cities with Council, our Assemblywoman Friedman. I will mention the funding for infrastructure, or actually, it's this afternoon, right after this meeting, so it'll be fresh in my mind, and I'll be sure to mention that to her. I agree, I think my colleagues have made some really insightful suggestions as far as the future programs and, and budgetary actions that we can be taking, so I, I thank them for that. And with that, I, I guess we are, we have completed today's assignments. Mr. Galanian?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and Members of City Council, again, for indulging us this morning. The next budget study session will be on Tuesday, the 18th. That will be our last departmental presentation. That will cover the remainder four or five departments. And then on the 20th, Finance Department will present a summary and all the other follow-up items that council has requested during the last few study sessions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And the next item is adjournment, so I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So I'll move.
Is there a second? Second?
Second.
We are, all right, thank you. We're adjourned at 11:24. Thank you very much, everyone.